Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of July ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, we have a special guest with us tonight. Her name is Shawna Maltby and she will be introduced by Ms. Mothershead. And we're real excited to have you here and there's a big reason why. Take it away, Ms. Mothershead.
I'm sure is.
You're welcome.
As many of you already know, Patricia Martell, our previous city manager, retired. And since that time, Shawna Maltby, who used to be our Human Resources Director, has been appointed as the interim city manager. So she wanted to come and introduce herself.
And see what you all do. I know all of your names. I know some of your faces. Hi, hello. I've been with Daly City for about thirteen years, the HR Director for about twelve. And the council have entrusted me to be the interim city manager for the next few months and I'm delighted. And I'm delighted to meet you all and get to know what you're working on and I appreciate your service. So it's nice to meet you and I'm just gonna stick around for a little bit and hear what this issue is.
Would any of the commissioners like to make a comment or?
I know your husband well.
Yeah.
I was in a lot of wastewater and that, so.
Yep.
So you're bred from city management to your father-in-law is?
Yeah.
City county.
It's worth mentioning that my mother was also the Director of Parks and Rec for Pacifica, too. So it's kind of in my blood. Yeah, yeah.
True blood.
True blood. Well, yeah, public servant. Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I thought all the while she was Lady Gaga, but she coming here.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Satori. So with that, may I have a roll call, please?
I, yes, Satori.
Yes.
Perano. Talarico.
Present.
D Giovanni.
Present.
And Dasma was absent.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna begin with item number one. And it's the use permit UPR dash five dash one eight dash zero one three four six seven. The applicant Leon Zoo proposes to change the use of the main floor of an existing building to an indoor dog boarding facility at sixty-two ninety-eight Mission Street, formerly the Saint Vincent de Paul Retail Outlet. The proposal is category exempt per SEQA guidelines, existing facility and alterations. So with that, please take it away for the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item for you this evening is the use permit for Pa's pet play located at sixty-two ninety-eight Mission Street. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building for an indoor dog play area, which would include the option for overnight boarding. The building was originally used as a bank and was most recently used as the Saint Vincent de Paul Retail Store.
Thank you. The photo, it shows the vicinity map of the area. You can see the, the building at the, at the tip of the triangle there. And Mission, Mission Street to the northeast, southeast and San Jose Avenue. On the other side, there is a Dollar Tree store that is to the back there where the, where the cursor is pointing. In between the two buildings, there is a open parking lot. That is a separate property owned by a separate owner and at this time is not available for use by the, for the, the property in question. The site plan again shows that the subject property is located on a triangular, triangular shaped parcel at the intersection of Mission Street and San Jose Avenue. The floor plan is gonna include a open play area that consists of approximately thirty-five hundred square feet on the main level. The surface will be covered with a high-quality permeable and washable artificial turf that's placed over the building's existing floor drain system. Additionally, there'll be a small retail area of about four-hundred-and-eighty square feet located at the main entry. The majority of the customers will be bringing their dogs in for morning or afternoon open play sessions. The facility will also offer overnight boarding, which would take place in the open play area. The overnight customers will be required to drop off their dogs by two PM in order to allow the dogs to play and expend energy before bedding down for the evening. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA per the SEQA guidelines fifteen-three-zero-one. In this photo, you can see an interior shot of the building. You can see the artificial turf that is in the process of being laid. The, the installation of the artificial turf did not require a building permit and, and the use of the site as dog boarding has not yet commenced. But they, they were, they were permitted to go ahead and install the artificial turf as it wasn't required to get a building permit. And here's another photo of the interior from a different angle. So the staff finds that the project is consistent with the City of Daly City general plan and the zoning regulations for the light commercial district. Please note a correction in the staff report. There is an inconsistency between the daytime number of dogs listed in the findings. The conditions of approval has the correct number listed at forty dogs during the day and fifteen dogs at night, with the opportunity to increase to fifty and twenty respectively after the first year of operation. So I've listed some of the conditions that we've placed. And the staff report contains all of the conditions listed. The facility will be staffed by trained personnel. At all times, dogs are present and it will include staffing in the overnight hours when they do have overnight dogs in for boarding. All animal waste is, is required to be directed away from the city's storm drain system. The floor drains in the facility will be connected to the sewer system and any solid waste will be collected and, and put out with the salt trash, trash refuse. Additionally, any trash storage will be required to be stored indoors until the day of collection.
Good remark.
The applicant has agreed to maintain the artificial turf by washing it on a daily basis. If the turf does degrade to a point where it's no longer conveying the liquid waste into the drain system, it shall be replaced. Staff recommends that the planning commission forward the use permit to the city council for approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, first, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And if there's anyone that would like to make a public comment, there are cards at the entryway and you'll have two minutes. You should submit them to the staff and then we'll call your name. So please forgive me for not announcing that earlier. So now we're open to the public hearing. Commissioner?
Well, just, let's see here. I'm trying to think when it was. October, not your dog place, obviously, but I actually was, was able. We took a vacation. We took our dog to Pa in South City, Pa Hotel. And so it was the first time I'd seen anything like this. And I think it's interesting that, well, first of all, I have a dog. It's interesting that there's gonna be grass and then it seems like the grass is gonna take all the space and that the dogs, if they sleep there, they're gonna sleep where the grass is. Is that correct? The dogs don't like to sleep where, I'm just saying, dogs don't like to sleep where they poo and pee. They don't do that. So it's interesting that your whole entire space is gonna be covered by grass that potentially dogs will piddle. And, and that's one, because I have a dog. So I thought that was very interesting. And besides that, the trash has to stay inside. The poo has to stay inside. That's gonna be interesting.
So Commissioner, it would be better, could the applicant come up, please?
Yeah, I'll direct it to you.
So, so anyway, so I'm, I'm looking, I, number one, I'd like to spend my money in Daly City when I need to find somewhere for my dog to go if I can't find a babysitter or a dog sitter. But I think it's interesting that you've decided to put turf on the entire space. I know because you don't have a back space and I'm sure you've already gone to the other doggy hotels and such to see what's out there. So I'm curious to see why you decided to have all turf and not have some space where, you know, they should go potty in one spot and live and play in another spot. I'm just curious.
So this is for us to maximize the play area. We do, we are lining the edges with raised dog beds, you know, the dog cots. So that's kind of where they can relax. Actually, a lot of dogs will lay down in grass and they do. I haven't had an issue with my dog personally not sleeping in the grass. I guess that's kind of all I have to say about that. I don't think we're having an absorbent number of amount of dogs either that are staying overnight, so fifteen or twenty dogs. We do plan on putting dog beds out during the time, during the nighttime just to cover over the grass area where they're supposed to sleep.
Well, I will say with regards to noise, so at the other place, there's a, which my husband didn't like, but there were, there was a camera so I could, I could check in on my dog. And I have, my dog's a little, little guy, but I could hear, 'cause you could hear. I could, I could hear at nine-thirty at night and ten o'clock at night, my dog who doesn't cry and doesn't wail. I could hear her wailing and I could hear all the other dogs wailing. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I'm saying is that there's gonna be a lot of noise.
So the importance of the way we operate as a cage, of cage-free facility is that there's a staff on, on hand all the time. And when we have dogs come and stay overnight, they're required to be dropped off before two, which allows them to expend their energy until, you know, until closing hours, which are, I mean, two to seven. That's about five hours where you're expecting them to play and run. And that usually, for most dogs, five hours is definitely enough to tire them out to sleep. And a lot of places, the issue with dogs is that if they're caged or if they're, you know, put in a room without any human presence, they're anxious and they don't have anyone to look for guidance. When you have staff on hand at all times, dogs are a lot less likely to bark and you're also there, you know, someone's there to police them if they are doing that.
Oh, I'm just, I, I've heard about, yeah, no, I've heard.
It's the openness of the facility that allows them to not get anxious. So once you have them caged in and, you know, there's no one in there with them, that's when they get anxious. And my dog is the same. That's just why I had, I came up with the idea of this business. I pretty much did it off of another place that I used to bring my dog where there's someone with him at all times. Because my dog, if you leave him just in a room closed, he'll howl and bark. I mean, he's a husky, he's loud. He'll howl until you come back to him. So it could be hours, which is why, you know, we have this openness where, you know, it's almost like a big house with dogs, but I mean, obviously in a facility with grass and you don't have to mop up pee and poo all day.
No, that's.
To the chair.
Yes.
My question is, again, I wanna say you have, the dogs are gonna play outside of the building?
No.
No, no, no.
It's all inside.
It's, it's all indoors.
Yeah, but there's a, there's the thing you said, thirty dogs in and then there's, overnight is fifteen, right, or forty dogs?
So I think that's what the conditions are that, for the quantity of my dog.
Now, whether they're in or they're out, I only have one dog behind me in my, where I live. Okay, he could be in or out and I will take, he takes care of the block. So what I'm saying is, in your area, whether they're residential, what houses are there? Where, where, where?
It's kind of far.
So.
It's not, yeah.
It's, it's, they're kind of far away.
So it's not a very residential area, but all the dogs are gonna be inside the building at all times.
All right. So there's no residential on either side, right?
No.
Okay, nothing placed on, okay.
No, no direct neighbors.
I'm just trying to get perspective.
I mean, that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Because here's another thing now.
Good for me.
You have, you have.
Yeah.
Fake grass that's gonna have ability for the drainage from poo and pee to go down.
Yes.
The sewer lines.
It's a, it's a type of grass made specifically for dogs.
Okay.
And it's woven, so there's no, there's no carpet layers. Everything goes straight through.
Okay, I'm following you. But they're going into the drain that goes to the sewer line, not to the store.
Yes, yes.
But have you checked, would water waste out or do they need, need a separate, separate grease trap separator to keep the hair and things out of the line?
We, we, Water Waste Water has reviewed the plans and they, they were okay with liquid, liquid waste going into the sanitary sewer system. Did not require a grease trap. They want the solid waste to be collected and put out with the trash.
So you're gonna collect the solid waste.
Correct.
Put it out for the trash. And when you put it out for the trash, that means like a Thursday morning or whenever the trash comes around?
Yes.
And if they miss, that, that barrel's gonna be ripe?
Probably.
Yes, no probably, yes. Let's do honesty here, yes. So whether there's neighbors or not, there's people going to the dollar store and this and that. I'm, I'm wondering is, maybe you need special pickups so that when you put it out, I don't know who picks up in an area, is it still our same scavengers? They would come and have a special pickup. Instead of you put it out, like I can put my stuff out on Thursday morning and sometimes the compost bin, they don't come till two, three o'clock. Now your waste would be compost.
Oh, no, no.
No.
No, it would be trash waste.
It'd be trash.
But I'm just saying, in, with forty dogs and whatever your number is, I'm trying to get at, maybe you need to arrange to have special pickup when you put it out. I wouldn't like it sitting on the corner and people walking by going to the, the store and that.
I, I will say businesses can have, I mean, you could have more than one, one.
Trash can.
No.
One pickup.
You could have one, more than one pickup. So you could do like every three, you know, do it twice a week.
I would like to see that as a possibility condition. Because, no, we don't need.
You know flies and smell.
Yeah, so I did wanna also add on that, on the, so I've talked to a scavenger, is it? Republic.
It's Republic Services.
So they will only pick up on San Jose side, which actually is a benefit to us because there are no, no other businesses on the San Jose side of the street. Where Dollar Tree is, that's actually their back and there's their back fire exit. And we do have that, the parking lot that separates the space between us and them. So we, we do have a place where we are gonna hold our garbage cans, which is gonna be near the end of the building on the San Jose side. And that has very little foot traffic, if that's any word to use.
Okay. Madam Chairman.
Good.
How have you been doing this kind of business?
So this is my first dog daycare, but I've been around dogs my whole life and this is, I've started multiple husky clubs, if you guys. The general idea is that we bring a big group of dogs together and make, you know, because huskies do have different play styles and we have them play together in the beach or at dog parks, et cetera. And I actually started one in Santa Barbara and then I'm part of the one in the Bay Area as well. I haven't done a daycare before, but I do have staff that I'm hiring that are working currently.
My question is, how long have you been doing this kind of business?
He hasn't.
I haven't. This is new for me.
This is first opened, brand new.
Because those questions that was asked is just a routine, a standard procedure to a businessman like a dog taker, right? Because if you're doing it for the first time, this question is really important. So it's a matter of being a businessman doing this kind of business. Because if you're doing it for the first time, I don't know how you, based on your experience to taking care of your own dog. But this one is a business. A lot of people will come in and go, so.
So this is my first dog daycare business and before that I've been running.
That's why, that's why I'm asking you, because this is a leading question. Because if you know, if you've been doing it before, then there's no question anymore. Because you've been doing, but if, for the first time you're doing it as a businessman in dog caring, probably you have to do a lot of research on this, okay? Not because you have a dog, you're taking care, you're going to the beach. We don't care about that. We care about your business, how to take care of the dogs, of other dogs, not your dog alone, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my question too is, would your large dogs and small dogs, you would want to keep, keep them? Right, you're gonna have separate areas for the big dogs and the little dogs?
Yes.
Right, and then, and I'm, and I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, you'll, you'll be following all the rules, you know, making sure they have the rabies and they have to complete all those if there's any issues with the pets.
So actually additionally, for cage-free boarding, dogs are required to have temperament tests. So just because they are, you know, they have all their shots, doesn't mean they're allowed to come to this facility all the time. And it requires that we, you know, they come in and they play and we see their behavior and if they're too rough, too aggressive, maybe excessive barking could be an issue too, then that's some, that's a client that we will end up having to reject because that's not right for our type of business.
Right.
Commissioner?
Well, I understand that what you're saying, it makes me feel good you're gonna screen them because some dogs will not board well. I mean, I'm not a dog owner for, for my own reasons, but some of them are more aggressive than everything else. I'm just saying you have a condition of approval. If there's not more than three calls of noise and everybody's telling me there's nobody around there, why did, I understand you put it in, but it makes me, if they get four calls, you said if the four calls come in, excessive noise at night, because your dogs are gonna be fifteen sleeping there or so. They'll be inside.
Yes.
And they bark. I mean.
Hopefully not. You can't really.
I know, that's what I'm saying. You're working on it. Is the good dog, bad dog, dogs gonna move, move? I don't like animal stuff in the middle of a city, for me. It's my personal opinion. So if there's four calls, what's the application? What is your extension, Michael? I'm, I'm sorry.
So the way the condition is written right now, we are going to allow, allow them to increase their daytime and nighttime number of dogs from forty to fifty during the day and from fifteen to twenty at night.
If they don't get?
If they do not receive greater than three complaints.
Okay, and if they do, what you're?
If they do, now I need to, they'll, they'll stay at the lower number.
Okay, so they can stay at the lower number as long as they get only three?
That's right.
If they get four, you're gonna say go back to three?
Their business plan is fifty and twenty. Fifty during the day, twenty at night. And our approach is we'll, we'll take a look and see whether, you know, how well forty and fifteen work.
All right, is there ever a time that it becomes a point that they can't control that and you say, okay, we won't renew that permit?
That's what number ten says, that the applicant, you know, if we, if this use goes in and we get, you know, numerous calls and that's not defined what numerous means, but if there's a, you know, a big backlash against the use, the applicants in number, condition number of ten been made aware that the use permit can be revoked.
Okay.
I, I will say it's something that we need in, in Daly City because there's many of us who, you know, we take our children or our grandchildren to daycare and, and my grandchildren are, by the way, at the Park and Rec basketball this week and I'm excited. So we have places we can take our children and our grandchildren and, you know, I have a little Lucy at home and if I can't find a babysitter when I'm gonna go somewhere, hopefully soon, on vacation, then there'll be something like this and I don't have to spend my money in South City. The only thing, you know, as a dog owner, is, is, you know, the thought, and I understand because I did research on the open and the closed, you know. And the only thing I would worry about, to be honest with you, is the, is this, you know, you're in a large building, so that building, all you have right now is gonna be that grass to keep the sound down. And if you visited the Pa place in South City, Pa's Poten Hotel, when you, when you went, when they had the dogs playing, it was super loud. It was super, super, super loud. Now they didn't have grass down, it was cement. But it, but it wasn't as large as your building and I've been in your building, the building you're gonna use, and it's an old bank.
So you're talking about acoustics?
Yeah, the acoustic sound. I'm just curious is, even let's say these dogs are just normally barking and playing, would the, would the graspy enough to keep the sound acoustic? Would that keep it enough for the sound not to be so loud, is all I'm asking.
So what kind of remedies for, we can put in there for the acoustics?
In the walls? Have you thought about it? I mean, did you go make noise when you walk in there?
The Planning Division added a condition of approval that, you know, we were also concerned about noise. The thing of it is, is there's not a real objective way to measure noise from a dog kennel. It's not like a regular freeway sort of thing where we can study.
You bring a couple of dogs and ask them to bark, right? Just have, just bring, bring them in and let them run around and bark and you'll hear the sound. It's, it's, yeah, go ahead.
That's exactly what I've tried to do. Just to, I bought a meter to test the decibels and three dogs barking, you can't hear them from outside. So what, the good thing about this building is it did use to be an old bank, so the ends are concrete, but the sides are all windows and there are thick windows that sound doesn't really get out of.
Nice.
So, and there's really high ceilings, so there's not much, on the main floor where the grass is gonna be, where the dogs are gonna be, there won't be an echo. There's not too much acoustic. Inside the rooms, it's completely different. I mean, you, you, I wouldn't wanna stand in there for too long. Which is why everything is storage underneath and all, it's all, you know, four walls of cement. Thick cement and, yeah, it'll give you a headache just being around there. I wouldn't want a dog barking down there.
Yeah, so downstairs, I've been down, so downstairs is gonna be storage?
Yeah, I mean, there's not too much we can do with it.
Yeah.
So they're not using it downstairs?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
So we did write a condition that said that if there's noise, they need to keep the windows closed, refusing service during certain hours and installing additional noise mitigation measures. The, the last thing we really wanna do is bring this back for a revocation. So if there's a problem, there's a condition that requires further measures be taken.
Point of inquiry, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
There is a provision here as a condition of approval that any significant modification and changes to the plans shall be treated as an amendment and shall be subject to the review by a council committee appointed by the mayor. Who is this council committee, your honor?
Mrs.
Is there a committee that will handle this?
Yeah, so if a committee is necessary, the request would be made to the mayor.
What kind of committee is this?
Typically, a committee consists of two council members, so the request is made to the mayor to appoint the committee for the specific item.
So whatever we are discussing today will be subject to the committee, right?
No, only if there is a major modification. If there's an issue or a modification necessary, it could be referred to a committee that would be appointed by the mayor.
So this is not yet been established yet to be appointed by the mayor, right?
Correct, and that is only if there's an issue. If, if this project is approved by the city council and he opens his business, there's not any. If, if this project is approved by the city council and he opens his business, there's not any issues, complaints or changes, then there would no, be no need for a committee.
So grand opening. No, I don't, but I, I, I understand, see, our concern is if we bring these ideas and thoughts up to you at this time, then hopefully there won't be problems down the line. And that's why we're all, you know, bringing up those questions, you know?
Well, this is a process, you know, it's a process, it's, it's, this is how it goes in the government. There's a process always, so do we approve it, but still you have to pass through the process and the condition. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's not any other questions, I have a couple being the chair. So I duly noted that, pardon the conditions, that we would make sure, um, according to the commissioners, that they do like more than one pickup for the refuge from the, um, unit from the waste at your facility. And you could probably arrange that, that's one condition. I actually have a couple of questions, there's a Senate bill nine forty-five, I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's a California state law that governs the pet boarding facilities, it was signed by Governor Brown in two thousand sixteen, so it's pretty recent. So some people may not be familiar with the legislation. So in the legislation, it, it states, and you probably have already spoken to the planner, I just wanna hear from you. Um, according to, it says that, um, when it comes to the fire, you either have to have it directly, um, the alarm has to be directly to the fire themselves, or it has to be installed with sprinklers.
Yes.
So which one is it?
We're installing alarms actually, which might be done by next week.
And that goes directly to fire, correct, according to the, the Senate bill?
Well, it's, um, it has to be monitored.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, but not, but you can't dial nine one, to be clear, you can't dial nine one one.
No, no, right, right.
That's what I'm trying to say, sorry, thank you Commissioner.
No, it's, we know the fire.
And the other thing is, is, uh, in some of this, it says the, um, the ventilation, provide a proper ventilation for the heating and cooling, so that the dogs are kept at a certain temperature. So it's not too hot, I don't know, it sounds like the Three Bears, right? Not too hot, not too cold, but they, it's very important that they have the proper ventilation. So that's part of the Senate bill, uh, nine forty-five. And um, I think that's like really important for the health. And that there's a, there needs to be an area, according to the, the state law as well, where if you have a sick dog, you have to provide a separate area in your facility. If a dog is sick that day or, or you notice it's not feeling well, it has to be separated from the rest of the dogs. Um, that's in this legislation as well. And if that's amenable, and then, and then it says you have to make sure that, that every, all the water, I'm sure you will, make sure that's potable water, yeah, I'm sure, and make sure that they, yeah. It's just things that they laid out that were never on the books before, believe it or not. And that, and like everybody here that has had dogs or, or we care about our animals as you do, that we wanna make sure that these, and if the staff would, um, I'm sure you're already familiar with it, would be willing to look over as part of the conditions of the Senate bill nine forty-five and make sure that all things that are according to the California state law that are applicable, so that he knows. It sounds like he's reasonable and, and wants to do it. And even the windows is, uh, do they, uh, currently, do they open and close regularly or, because it's an older building, do they replace those windows?
They did, um, the owner of this building had redone all the windows before it got to me.
Yeah, and we're gonna have security, correct, obviously. Security, cause uh.
Oh, a lot.
For the dogs, yeah, because people, I mean, unfortunately you hear everybody, oh, somebody's dogs was stolen or, or things like that. And also I think it's a good idea, like Commissioner Pirano was saying, that if you're, uh, able to, to let the owner be able to monitor their, their pet, like they'll be able to, to have contact and, and I know my friends have done it with their, left their pets, and they send them a little note, little, little toe toes, doing well, or, you know, that kinda thing, to make it, so it builds up a relationship for you as well and builds up business, so personal touch. Um, if, if you foresee that, that would be good.
Something that we can't do, but it's, um, for cage free boarding, it's usually something they don't do, just because when you have
Oh, sure.
twenty dogs playing together, um, it can be easily, I mean, what we see as playful behavior might not be seen as the same thing to every owner, which, you know, then you open up yourself to a lot of liability and a lot of, you know, negligence issues. Or, and like lawsuit issues where they're like, oh, your dog, you know, it would open up the possibility to get sued more. Just because someone's watching you twenty-four seven and maybe not every pet owner sees, understands what playful behavior is versus fighting behavior versus aggressive behavior.
Now, that's my, that, to the chair, that, that would be a concern, I'm just, if it was, that's why I didn't choose the open uh, place that they, that I read about.
That's a good point.
Because, I mean, they do have playtime together, but at some point, I, I would guess your staff will be trained to deal with that if, if, if playfulness turned into
Yes, yes.
a problem.
Aggression.
Yeah, that's why I wouldn't wanna watch.
So there's a very thin line between, between, you know, playing and, or, I wouldn't say that there's a thin line, it's, there's a lot of factors that are visible. I mean, dogs show a lot in their faces and that's how you can tell if playfulness becomes aggression. And that's kind of what we're trained to do, that's why we have someone in there at all times, whenever there are dogs, to make sure that, that it doesn't pass that threshold where playfulness becomes aggression and fighting occurs.
And, and when they, you say they're trained, um, are these employees, are they, what are they trained in, where do they get their training?
So there are, um, dog CPR, dog behavior certificates that are.
So they're certified, right?
But there are no, I mean sadly, there is no regulation for it, so there is, it's, there's not a real, I mean, it's not like there's food safety handling. It's not regulated the way humans and babies and other things are regulated.
That's a, that's a good point, so that, that might be something that we could.
That's for the lions. Um, how many peo- I'm sorry, through the chair, how many staff will be to the number of?
That's good.
So, um, we plan to have, uh, during open hours about five staff members, which, um, for the amount of dogs we have should be enough, it's not the great, the largest area, three thousand square feet sounds like a lot, but when, when there are dogs running around, it's, when people standing around, there's not that much space.
And, and, I'm sorry, my last question, I mean, so I'm guessing you, not just running around, you'll find, you'll be working to have games and feed the dogs, yeah.
Socialize them and keep them active, it's not, we don't wanna introduce things like toys and treats and food, because that is where aggression comes from, where dogs are more possessive of toys. Tug of war turns into fights really quick, um, it's more of just getting them to play, interact with each other. A lot of dogs aren't too socialized at home, you know, going for a walk or sitting at home all day, it's not gonna promote their brain enough. Whereas when you're playing with other dogs all day, that's how you tire them out really quick.
Yeah, so you're right, because in, in this, it actually has a guideline about how often they actually have to get up and, and have activity
Yeah.
as well, which I, I think that's a, that's very, like, really important. Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Thank you very much. Oh, just sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
Have you handled a lot of, all kinds of dogs?
Uh, I have, yes. Um, for the most part, I've dealt with big, large, every breed that you can imagine, um. I think most dogs, their behavior comes down to how they were trained and how the owners have, you know, kept with that training. So I actually work with a lot of pit bulls, just because they're one of the most neglected type of dogs. And for the most part, they're, they're the same as every dog, they're really loving, really loyal. But if you teach them the wrong things, yes, they can be a problem.
Very good, now, I, I'm going to give you a situational, situation, some sort of situation problem.
Okay.
As much as you, you said you, you're well trained on that. Assuming there is a pit bull, a German dog, and a bulldog having, eh, eh, being wild, how do you settle that kind of situation?
So if there's a big fight, is that what you're asking?
Yes, or e- even the chihuahua comes in and then, you know, you know, this, this is a situation.
So for the most part, we will have the dogs screened, so we understand their behavior, because not all dogs play the same. But if a fight do occurs, the easiest way to do is pull them apart. And if they don't let go, um, you go for the ribs, you poke them under the rib and that releases their jaw. Um, that's as, the best you can do, after that you separate them, you don't put them in the same area the rest of the day, let them calm down.
And then you call their mommies and have them take them.
That's definitely a stipulation.
I'm sorry, your dog cannot come back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, please take a, get a flight back, your vacation's over.
Come back, yeah, Hawaii's over.
You have to call the, the parents, right? And they'll be signing documents, I'm sure.
They have to sign liability, they have to release our liability.
And what are you selling, just toys for retail?
Uh, toys, food, that's, dog food, toys, um, we might have some higher quality beds, things like that, it's not, it's not much.
Yeah.
We, the small retail area, I think everything, everyone buys everything on Amazon for a cheaper price anyway. It's gonna be for convenience, maybe they chewed their leash on the way here and you have half a leash.
Oh, that's good. Pet products, people invest in their pets.
And their logos, you know, when people go to hotels, they like to take something with the logo?
Oh, yeah.
Then you.
We have, we have.
You have a hotel, you have to sell your logo, it's marketing.
We have, we have. You're ready to represent, aren't you?
Yeah, I believe in it.
Any other question, commissioners? Okay, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a seat.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
I like it.
Oh, just show, public comment, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought.
You should.
Go ahead. I apologize. And your name, ma'am?
I'm Dr. Perpetua Madrileo.
Uh, do you happen to have, oh, they're gonna write it down, okay, that's fine. And you have two minutes, please.
Okay, I wrote this letter Friday, um, July sixth, uh, directed to, um, to Daly City Planning Commission.
Really?
Regarding a proposed indoor dog, dog facility at sixty-two ninety-eight Mission Street. My name is Dr. Perpetua Madrileo, agent is across the street in Mission. Um, I'm writing this letter today because I'll be out of town on the scheduled date of this meeting. I received this notice about the proposed boarding indoor facility for dogs mailed to my house at South Gate Avenue, which is too far from the address of the subject property. I asked the business owners in the neighborhood in Mission Street about this letter, none of them received it. So I made copies and delivered to them. There are ten to, or eleven restaurants from John Daly Boulevard to Cracker Avenue, which outnumber the kind of business in the area. Uh, restaurant owners and staff did not like the idea. For some reason, we expect like number of dog borders in the facility, unlike one or two dog bed at home. Um, the noise they will, the noise they will create when they bark at the same time, most of all the smell in the air caused by feeds and their toilet, uh, waste. Restaurant owners said this is not appropriate in the area. They might lose customer causing their, this business to slow down. I agree to that. I suggest this kind of business should be placed close to a park or beach, but not in the place where the people come to enjoy their food in their favorite restaurant. Because you know, there are a lot of restaurants in the area.
Yeah, there's not.
I'm sorry, but we are all taxpayers and we have the right to oppose what is not appropriate.
And I'm not sure, did we, did we receive that letter?
No, we did not, we received no correspondence on the.
I received it, um, mailed to my house, but I was wondering why not mailed it to my office, which is across the subject property.
Because, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Mother said.
The public notices are sent to the property owners and where the, the owner's address is.
Correct. They're sent to, I don't know if you heard her. They're sent to the property owners and we're not allowed to address, to speak with you, uh, uh, because it's according to the Brown Act or that thing. But we appreciate your public comment and we have addressed a couple of the issues, because it is an inside facility. It's not an outside facility.
Do you understand, ma'am?
Yeah.
The reason is, I think, main thing is, the, uh, property owners get the notice. This is one of the problems we have in a city that has a lot of renters and a lot of things. Noticeers sent to the property.
That's the law, yeah.
Don't you put them on the telephone poles?
Yes.
Yes.
They're posted on the poles, uh, it's a certain number of feet and that they're notified around the area of the business of whatever the permit is. As property owners. That's right, we can, but we're not allowed to communicate, uh, to, yes. That's the Brown Act.
The commissioners can.
Yeah, we can say some things.
You can respond to what has been raised by the public comment, yes.
So we have addressed some things.
We have, may I, but I would say to you, is that only because I've visited, because I have a dog, um, if he, what it sounds like to me, is if he follows what has been laid out, you won't have the smell. And we brought up the, the thought that maybe you wanna have your trash picked up more than once a week. And so if he follows that suggestion, I really don't, because they'll be able, they'll know to, how they're gonna keep the trash, so that there won't be a problem.
Yeah, we set conditions, like we add conditions to where, when we approve or disapprove something, when we make a vote. So we act those conditions that he has to follow, and then they're, they're actually monitored. And if he doesn't do the conditions, then, then it will not be, if it's too much noise complaints or what have you.
Then they'd have to come back and, and speak with, uh, the planning department.
And the council.
Yeah, and the council, so, but I would say to you is that, um, I've been to larger facilities, and I mean, much larger, and, um, you know, I believe that since he, the amount of dogs he's gonna have and what he's already done and planned, I think it won't be a big, huge problem. Um, I would guess, I would guess that if it is, you're gonna say something to them, right? I mean, you will contact, you know, but let's hope, because he's another business owner, let's hope that, you know, him following all these, uh, plans, that it won't be a problem for you. And it might be convenient, somebody might say, well, I'll let the dog go hang out for an hour and I'm gonna go to the dentist, or I'm gonna let the, because they don't have a baby, dog sitter, they'll take the dog.
Draw business.
Yeah, they take the dog and then go have dinner at the restaurant, so that's what we're hoping for.
Because these are indoor dogs, they're not outdoor.
Outside.
It's indoor.
You, the SPCA is, you know, in Toyota Point.
It's San Mateo, you're saying?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
So, um, I thought maybe it's appropriate for that kind of business to, to be in.
It would be hard, well, you, you, when you have, and I'm just saying for me personally, because I have a dog, it, it would be more of a convenience to be in the middle of the city where people can come and use the facilities.
It's not in your residence.
Yeah, and it's, and, and, and it's, in, in the space that it's at, at the old St. Vincent de Paul, you're not next right, I mean, it's there, but there's still the road on each side, and then they, and Mission Street, yeah, they have that divider, and then they have another parking area, and then they have your businesses, because you're at the dentist office right there? Yeah, I know, I know, exactly.
It's not a big problem for me, but you know, I, I talk to the restaurant owners and they are the one who, uh.
They're concerned.
Yeah, I understand that, that, that's a little further down and they, like I said, the dog's inside, but we appreciate that and all these conditions will be put on there.
Yeah, we're.
And then we are following the, the, the rules of the state law.
Yeah, that's important, you know, we're, we're saying is, but I, we really think that is, if he follows, you know, what's been discussed and he follows all the rules, I, I, I believe you're not, I really believe you're not gonna have a huge problem. If it was right next to you, like, you know how the, your business is, if it was right next to you, then I would say, yeah, you'd hear all the barking through the wall. But it's way far away, I think the way they're gonna keep the place and, um, monitor it and not have a lot of animals.
On the, on the other side in, um, San Jose Avenue, there's no, it's, it's a little bit far from the residential.
It is.
Correct.
But in Mission, in Mission, there's a, a lot of, uh, residential there.
Yep, but, but when, when you're looking at the building, if you're right in the front of the building where the doors are, you have the road and then you have parking, and then you have a more like a little road, and then you got the sidewalk, then you have your business, so it's, it's far away.
It's not close, he's not gonna have the dogs go, go near, in, in the restaurants.
But the distance is not too far.
Planner?
I, I think it's, um, fair to say that we're gonna monitor this use, see how it goes. We're gonna check out the noise at night, make sure that it's, you know, something that's not out of control. Um, his ultimate plan was to have again fifty during the day and twenty at night. We said, no, that's too many, we're gonna see how it goes at first. And if we don't, you know, receive any complaints, then you can bump up to that number, but we've limited the number. And, uh, that's the best I think that we can do at this point.
Request was.
We're gonna put some faith that it's gonna work, in our recommendation, that is.
Conditions.
Yeah.
Or bring some dogs, bring your friend dogs over and then you guys go and see how the sound is and maybe kinda help. and maybe kind of help you with the, no, really, you know, you have a lot of dog friends, right? Have, have a party.
He did do that. He did do that.
Yeah, so I, I really believe, I mean, I, I can speak, I think for all of us is that, if he follows all the rules, we should be okay.
Thank you, but we appreciate it, definitely. And you can always contact them. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you very much. And with that, now we will have a... Is there anyone else with a public comment? Okay, thank you. I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. None opposed. Okay, so staff recommends the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendations. May I have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
So moved.
And with our recommendations, who's second?
Yeah, that, that comes down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second over here.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? So we recommend that the civil, city council affirm environmental assessment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? And this is where we put the conditions. So we recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR dash five dash one eight dash one three four seven zero, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein, including, if they could read that, please, the more than, uh, pickup?
Coordinate with republic services about the need for increased pickup, um, in terms of frequency. Um, compliance with the health and safety code that you mentioned from the assembly bill. And we're also adding in the requirement of a fire alarm system. That's specifically mentioned in the health and safety code, but it, it is something that we were, we are requiring and some companies are installing.
Yes. That's it.
So it was three things that I...
I think that, anything else that we need in the conditions? Okay, with that, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To accept.
So moved. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Satori?
Yes.
Proano?
Yes.
Tellerico?
Yes.
Di Giovanni?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number two, please. This is use permit UPR dash five dash one eight dash one three four six seven is to lease portions of the third, fourth, and fifth levels on the existing parking structure at number three Ceremony Shopping Center to local automobile dealerships for storage for new automobiles.
Yes.
Mr. Michael, would you please take it away, please? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, this is a use permit for Ceremony Shopping Center to allow or to lease portions of an existing parking structure at the Ceremony Shopping Center to local automobile dealerships for storage of new vehicles. I think everybody knows where Ceremony Shopping Center is. The, uh, parking garage is located, again, off Callan, would be just west of Macy's. For any of you who have been there, it's a new construction, a couple, uh, actually about a year old now. There's just another pic, a couple of pictures of it taken in between Macy's and the structure. Existing site context, basically Macy's is the, uh, use that's next door. Of course, the, um, Planet Fitness and Dick's Retail and Athletic Uses are to the south. Or Crunch, excuse me. Um, Firestone Automob, uh, Automobile Repair to the north of the project site, again, also in the shopping center. Callan Boulevard, just for some context. The applicant's, uh, proposed storing a number of vehicles in the upper three levels of the parking garage. At the third floor parking would be three hundred and thirty, where there are three hundred and thirty-four stalls. City Toyota would occupy three hundred of those stalls. And the plans that were attached to the staff report identify the exact spaces that would be occupied by City Toyota's cars. On the next level up, um, Daily City Mitsubishi would have seventy spaces and Nissan of Ceremony would have a hundred and ninety stalls. So there's a total of three hundred and five parking stalls, not all of them occupied, but quite a few of them would be occupied on the fourth floor. On the fifth floor, um, Nissan, Ceremony Nissan would occupy a hundred and twelve stalls. And then Tesla, uh, would have forty, uh, stalls for EV charging, electric vehicle charging. The general public's actually allowed to park in the Tesla stalls and those are not part of this use permit, but it's just, uh, i- indicated there to let the planning commission know, um, what's going on there in case there's a, you know, Tesla's being charged there. So that's unique, that, those charges are unique to Tesla vehicles also.
Mm-hmm.
But anybody can park in those stalls. So that's the fifth floor parking pan. So the, uh, we took some pictures. Any of the commissioners who have been to the site may know that this vehicle storage has actually already started. Um, we were made aware of this and we contacted Regency Centers, the owner of the, uh, shopping center, let them know that they actually needed a use permit for this. And they immediately complied with the requirement for the use permit and made an application. So the photos we're gonna show you show some of the vehicle storage and illustrate, uh, a case in addition to the fact that there's an excess of, uh, parking at the shopping center as enumerated in the staff report, uh, make the case for why the planning commission, the city staff's recommended approval of this and why the planning commission should, um, advance it with a recommendation of approval to the city council. So anyway, this is a photograph of the existing condition at the first floor. When we moved to the next floor, and this is a granted, a weekday in the middle of the summer. So I think everybody knows that. Um, but when, when we moved to the second floor, there's two cars, um, you know, there's basically nobody there. And we took several pictures around the first floor. They all look the same, but for brevity in, in the presentation, we're just showing you one picture. When we moved to the third floor, again, this is where City Toyota's, uh, vehicle storage is, you know, has already begun occurring.
Um, may I ask when that started?
It was probably a couple of months ago. The applicant is here and they can tell you exactly when that is.
Hang on a question. Wait till he's finished.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, and then, um, the fourth floor, again, Nissan of Ceremony. I don't know if Mitsubishi's there yet. I didn't quite see any Mitsubishi's there. Are they? Okay, yeah, but I definitely noticed Nissan there. And then on the fifth floor, um, slash roof, uh, Nissan of Ceremony has cars. And the Tesla EV chargers are not there yet. They're, they're in the building permit process. And again, that's not part of this use permit.
Right.
So we've had some experience with, uh, vehicles, uh, new vehicle storage. Um, a couple of places out on Carter Street and here at, on Unipar Sarah. Um, we went with the five-year duration for this permit. The intention here is that these, the storages are temporary in nature. The, uh, Regency Center completed construction of the parking structure so that additional retail could be constructed in the immediate vicinity. And that's what ultimately will happen. Um, there will be, you know, more retail installed. Um, there's a hotel that's been, uh, slated in the planned development zoning for construction. So as those uses come online, the, uh, center will need to make those, you know, parking spaces in the structure available. But in the meantime, um, we think it's appropriate to grant a use permit. Um, we've recommended a five-year duration. Uh, we've coordinated again with the city's engineering division. They wanted to make sure that the city streets weren't being used to unload vehicles. And in fact, the applicant has indicated to us that that is not occurring. Um, there's no room for it actually in Callan. And these big flatbed trucks just can't be accommodated anywhere near there, so we don't feel that'll be a problem. Um, of course, the other areas of the shopping center are not allowed for vehicle unloading and storage. And of course, there's no automotive repair. That occurs, any repairs that need to be made to vehicles occurs, of course, at the dealership or at the, at the dock where they come in, so. Uh, the project's exempt from CEQA. The staff, the staff is recommending the planning commission, uh, recommend approval of the use permit to the city council. Um, Rob Aldonado from Regency Centers is here. Um, if there's any questions, he's the applicant and the staff's also available.
Okay, so at this time, I'll need to open the public hearing and if the applicant could come up?
Commissioners, may I have a question?
Yeah, let's, I mean, bring the applicant up so that you guys can ask, also ask the, the questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the, to the applicant, if you don't mind. Thank you for being here.
Terry Martinez from Regency Centers.
Hi.
Also.
Good evening and welcome. And so this way then, if the commissioners, I'll open it up for the commissioners. Commissioner Proano, would you like to start?
Well, I think it's great. I may, I do. It's open space. It's not being used. Why not use it? I think it's a great idea. And since they're new vehicles, they shouldn't be leaking on your good floors, right?
That's right. We check, we check.
I mean, seriously, that's, I would worry about that personally. Um, so, uh, I understand you've been doing this before. And then was it that many, um, car dealerships or did it grow once the doors opened?
We started with Nissan, um, and they took one hundred stalls in the beginning. And then Mitsubishi came on with seventy stalls. Then Nissan needed more stalls and so we gave them more stalls. And then City Toyota saw everyone else there. And, um, we've been also monitoring the parking garage. And, you know, we weren't surprised that parking was gonna be vacant there. Um, so we did give City Toyota three hundred stalls. Um, they're all on license agreements. We control termination of all of them, um, quickly. And we're aware that, you know, our plans for development, that this is not a long-term parking for any of the dealerships. Um, but they needed a place and we want to help all the local businesses and, you know, we're making income too, so.
It all works.
They're making income.
Yeah.
But it's, it's good for everybody because I know this, they, when dealerships need to order cars, they order ahead of time, so they need to know where to put them. So I think it's great that it's, you're helping other businesses and they're helping you.
And we never allow transporters. They're never allowed, um, you know.
We chase them off property when they do come off property, so.
You know, I've been there for thirty years and at Ceremony and I was born there. So, um, we have transporters try to sneak on and we shoo them away. Because it's a big, you know, it's a big open area.
Sure. Okay, uh, and commissioners?
Yes, Chief of Chair.
Go ahead.
What's Daily City getting out of this financially? I mean, I know we're nice and friendly, but our budget is a little squeaky, so, um, what do we, what's we're...
Well...
Well, no, there has to be some.
There are two, there are two Daily City auto dealerships that are using the site, so it's helping their businesses. Um, additionally, the city receives business license taxes based on, um, rental, uh, property. So we would get a business license tax increase from the, the rental revenue that's increased.
This is for the people that know, know that we're short on money. But another question is, so you have three hundred, one hundred, da, 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 da. Is that gonna, is that your cap right now?
That is it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and you will provide, of course, security all the time?
Twenty-four hour security. We have CCTV up there.
No, good.
And we do not accept any responsibility for their vehicles either. They're parking there at their own risk, just like customers, but we do have security twenty-four seven and CCTV, so.
Because that's a bait shop for, uh, moving cars fast. So, thank you.
Uh, I guess my only question is Christmas, I'm sorry, Christmas time, um, you're, you're gonna look, is that why we, you left the first and the second level?
Right, yeah. Um, we're hoping, you know, we couldn't lure anyone to park there on the second floor last Christmas. Um, of course, it was new. But with the parking situation in Ceremony, three hundred and sixty degrees, you know, we, we don't have a parking problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Satori?
We did monitor it during the, the last holidays and, you know, even like she said, we were, we tried to get the staff to park, so we're giving an incentive to park there and...
They don't want to park there.
They don't want to park there.
You know, but we will, of course, monitor because our first, um, our tenants and our customers are number one priority. So if it does become an issue, you know, we terminate.
Commissioners Satori?
Yeah, um, Your Honor.
Sure.
I'd like to ask this topic regarding, uh, develop, future development. When is the hotel going to be built? Is it, is there hope?
Um, well, the, um, center's actually actively working on, um, on bringing us a more specific proposal. Um, I, I'd have to say it's probably at least two years away, um, so it's not right around the corner. But it's something that they are actively working on and we are, you know, we are in discussions with them about, um, a submittal at some point in the future.
And, uh, secondly, my, I, not vehemently, but I object to this five-year. Can you do it year-to-year basis?
Well, we do think that five years is appropriate. Um, it's the sort of thing that we don't think is gonna be a problem within the five-year timeframe. The planning commission can do a year-to-year basis if all four of you agree to make that recommendation. Well, it would be the majority, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, it's possible. If that's something that you want, we are recommending the five-year.
But is it possible if we can do it a year-to-year basis?
It is, it is possible if you...
I do have a question and I understand where you're coming from, but it sounds like even though it's a five-year, if things start looking different, you said you have the option to terminate it.
Yes, correct.
So it, it could be a year and then they say in six months, it looks like we need the parking. You guys need to start making other plans and so...
Absolutely. If it becomes a problem like it's the holidays, if we need extra parking, one of the dealerships is gonna have to go.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner?
And if, you know, if development comes sooner than we anticipate, then, of course, that's why we have it on a license agreement where we control termination.
And they're, they're under contract with their lease holders to provide a certain amount of parking. And so they need to, you know, abide by that.
Yeah, so what I was gonna suggest is, uh, like you, when we had the Sayu Food, uh, they had cars as well, parking. I mean, it, the commissioners, that depends up to what you guys, but remember, we did a two-year condition when they came back, when they came back.
The owners have been locked stock and barrel. I think it's real, I'm very happy, because we, they can cancel six months.
Yeah, so I'm, uh, personally, I'm just, my thought in is that if, if they said to us, it's five-year and they said, we can't do anything, we're locked in, then I would say, let's say something. But if you're assuring us that at any time you needed to change something?
That's right.
That you can do it, I don't know if we need...
So...
Yeah, that's why we are asking them.
Yeah.
It can be done.
She says it can be done.
Yes.
If we can be flexible on this?
It's temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, it's temporary.
Yeah.
But the point is if we can be flexible like during holidays, I know that...
Right.
I, I live nearby, that's why I, I know the place. So sometimes it's, the traffic is heavy really, even now. But the point is, if we can be, if Ceremony can be flexible on this, like during holidays?
Absolutely.
Then...
Okay.
We are in for this.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you. And I have a, a couple of suggestions. Given the fact that it is a large parking structure and I was over there looking at it and, um, it's huge and we want people to utilize it. But I was thinking that in order to promote it, because people are not used to that, right? And we know that the way you built it, you put a lot of money into it, you made it nice, safe and wide, where people do turns and everything. I actually was, I was very impressed, like, driving through it. Like, you also have those courtesy vehicles, there's, there's security. But if there's any way at all, because I've heard from so many residents that go either to the TJ Maxx side and then there's no walk, even a walkway to get to the Ross or to the Dick's Sporting Goods, so they just give up and then they leave. We don't want to lose any retail.
Absolutely.
So, and then the signage for the, the, maybe a better way to promote a little bit differently because you guys are great at marketing, uh, that we do have this parking garage and all that. Because at Christmas, I agree with the Commissioner Satori, that there are, they, you can't find a par, a parking spot. And that's what we want. We want to promote our retail, right? And then you guys are being flexible, which we, on the permit. If there's any way to have a courtesy vehicle, because even our seniors, they said the same thing, that they would love to go shop on the other side, but they can't get there. They have no way to get there.
We can absolutely bring that up, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And just, uh, just look into it because we need more promotion that is there. I think once people start to get there, other than the Crunch people, then they'll get used to parking there. Um, and then instead of riding a circle, circle, looking for a spot. And there's that, and then when people call and tell me that they leave, I don't want to hear that because then there goes our retail. And of course, our priority is, uh, our Daily City businesses, which is our Mitsubishi and our City Toyota. I mean, I love the Colma business too, but our, I'm a Daily City Commissioner and our revenue here is a, a priority as well, right? So, um, we want to make sure that they, they get taken care of and we appreciate that you guys are working in partnership, like, um, like businesses in our area do on that. And are there any other, and can we, when did you start parking, like she was saying? When did you guys start this parking?
The first Nissan came on in January. The first Nissan came on in January.
So.
And then Mitsubishi, March, and then Toyota in May.
So given the fact that there was not a permit there, is there any way to retro that so that, that, that for, so we, are we losing, we're losing money if we don't have a dated, correct, or a permit?
No, because the business, the receipts are.
For the rental.
The business license tax is based on the gross receipts for the year, so it's not.
We're not going to lose money?
Yeah, because the use permit doesn't have anything to do with the business license and the gross receipts.
Yeah. So just so you know, in the future, if you ever decide to do anything like that, please know that it would be really behoove, you know, to come to our planning and our permitting process and, because I was a little thrown back when people, when I went over there and I said, oh, they're already, the cars are already here. I said, how long have they been here? So that's what people were asking me, how long have they been there? So if we could, but so backdating it wouldn't help us in a revenue stream, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, wouldn't have anything to do with that.
There's nothing to backdate, yeah.
Yeah, we can't do that. Okay, so thoughts, any other thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, I would just say, since you're standing here about parking, and I will say it's a good thing when I've gone, because TJ Maxx is at that, it's on, and the party warehouse, all that's in one section. And the parking's great, but the parking on the other side where Dick's is and where the baby.
Have a baby, yes.
It's chaotic there.
It is.
Oh my God. It's horrible. I just want, and it's good stores, but horrible.
We're finding signs and as you suggested, we also talked about in our office with courtesy vehicles.
Yeah, courtesy vehicle, in a walkway.
We also have in our, our next 2000 budget, we're going to be redoing the asphalt and striping and stuff like that.
Good, I was going to say that, because we were driving and so all your lines are there from before and then on top you guys, right?
I just blacked them out again last week.
People are beeping at you and you're trying to figure out where to go.
I blacked them out again last week.
It's horrible. I just wanted to say that.
Part of when this whole thing came about, when we signed with Ross, they had a contingency of how, what dictated that parking.
Yeah.
So they, because of Ross's coming in, they said they need this, this style of parking, so that's why they went in and slurry coated and restriked when Daly City's not, you know, weather-wise, it's not hot all the time, let's be honest. So slurry coating over old asphalt, it doesn't really cure that well, so.
It went home with people.
So we're looking at that as a huge, a big asphalt project coming up in our fiscal year.
But you just need more. I mean, it's great, but I'm, I'm thinking, you guys didn't realize how busy those stores are, because there's always, it doesn't matter what time you go.
No, it's, we, and we're constantly blacking out the old stuff that's there.
Yeah.
It's just.
It doesn't stay.
It's heavily used.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's on our radar for capital improvement stuff.
Yeah, that was the only thing, I remember looking down, I said, I said, oh man, they got, because where do you park? There's lines everywhere. But anyway, congratulations, because it's, they're nice stores.
Your Honor, can I give my comment, why, don't get offended about this, because this is just a process.
This is the process.
And you know why the, the parking space was built at the same time, it's not friendly. You build up a walkst, walkway going to Macy's and it's closed, it's not open.
It's open, it's healthy.
Our Macy's is open.
No, I mean to say the walk bridge.
It's open, it's healthy.
Because when I pass by there, I, I, I want to, to, to park in that because it's beautiful at the same time and it provides at least sunlight proof because it, it, your vehicle gets cleaned and then outside. But the point is, it is not friendly really, because if you're going somewhere here, somewhere there's, you have to, it's like a maze to me. You have to, where, where am I going to go, where am I going to park here? So see to it that if you can find a ways or means wherein you can have this friendly way going to the direction, wherever.
You're, we're looking at also traffic studies now that this development is done and what creates the wayfinding signage there.
That is why, that's why this is always bacon, that's why, it's always bacon, because people thinks it's, it's impossible to get out and get in, that's why.
Well, I mean, we've, on our side, we've seen a, a higher usage of the Calan exit and entrance now than before, because people are starting to find out there's more than just two entrances to Cerro Monte, there's four. So we are definitely seeing the increase in the different, different areas. We're also looking at our potential of getting car counters to see which areas are the heavily used. We have started putting up wayfinding signage around the center saying, letting you know that these big green signs that say, parking structure located next to Macy's, everyone knows where Macy's is, assuming, with arrows. So we're trying to direct traffic the best we can now, letting people know where this is at, you know, with way other, wayfinding signage on also where the exits are for freeways.
I understand what he's talking about, that white walkway goes right into Macy's and that's it.
But may I ask through and.
When I pass through the Macy's walk bridge, it's closed, so I don't know.
It's open now, it's open now.
Probably now, but, but at the time when I was.
Well, the reason why is because Macy's is also doing an interior remodel.
Oh.
So they were getting their stuff all situated. Now both upstairs and downstairs is open, we had to wait for, you know, the, the city to stamp their plans and say, these are all approved and done and everything's signed off, we're clear, you know, all our inspections are done, so we could, we had to, we opened it shortly after our, all the plans and permits were signed off. The reason why there was closure, we were done, the, the owners, was because of Macy's, Macy's has their, they're, they're ramping up their second floor and they're gonna, in the next month or so, they're gonna have another big hurrah because they're, they're gonna have something exciting coming up.
Real quick through to the chair and piggyback in on, on what my fellow commissioner was asking. So is the walkway on the second floor of the parking structure?
Yes.
So kind of like when you go to Stonestown, you know if you go to that section, you, you can walk straight?
Right.
Yes.
I walked across the bridge, it's really nice.
Just for fun. And when you land in Macy's, is it hard, let's say you really don't want to go to Macy's, you know what I mean?
They're going to Macy's.
You're going, I know, I know you're going to Macy's. But if you want to get out of Macy's, you go in and you want to go out, is it a maze? Or where do you land? I'm trying to figure out, where do you land?
So where.
Ladies' clearance.
The ladies' clearance upstairs.
Upstairs where the ladies' clearance was.
So to get out, I mean, you have to, it's, you're going to escalators.
And so it's close by?
And it takes 10 minutes to get to Anderson's Bakery because you have to go around.
But then you get to see all the good stuff on the side of the mall.
Yeah, that's true. The key is to walk.
The key is to get.
Personally, when I, when I go there on the weekends now, I park in the parking structure for number one, because I know no one's going to be parking there. And I'm not going to Macy's, but I park as close to that entrance between Classy Nails and Macy's and just go right in that entrance.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, now that he brought it up, now, and you brought it up, now I have to go with a coupon.
There you go.
Okay, I think, is that all the questions? Okay, regarding it, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then are there any public comments concerning this item, item number two? Hearing none. I would like a motion, please, to, to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so recommends that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, none. Okay, recommend that the city council affirm environmental assessment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR-5-18-13467, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein. And are there any other conditions that we need to add other than?
What we, I said is, can it be year-to-year basis?
That is up to the commissioners. Because it is currently already temporary.
Right.
Correct?
It's proposed as temporary.
It's proposed as temporary already.
Okay. Temporary is the word, because five years is not temporary to me.
Yes, temporary. And it can be, and it can be stopped at any time, depending on the monitoring, the conditions of that. Are you okay, Commissioner Satori, with that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, so subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein, may I have a motion with a roll call, please?
Motion.
Make a motion to accept it?
Yes.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Satori?
Yes.
Proano?
Yes.
Tellerico?
Yes.
D Giovanni?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item number three. Thank you very much for coming here tonight, appreciate it and looking forward to more retail. Okay, item number three, we have a general plan, because this is the determination of Carter Street property sale to Point Martin LLC. And if the planner, Michael, would like to give us the presentation, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, this is a very simple presentation. It's one slide. Essentially, it shows an area that the city staff has been working on with the developer of the Point Martin subdivision. It was approved as Point Martin II, but now Point Martin I and II have been combined, we just call it Point Martin. And when the Point Martin II subdivision was approved, we were not aware that the city owned the, a little piece of property in the purple there, next to Carter Street. There's a history to this involving essentially the Calhoun House selling property to the city back in the 70s and then the city transferred some property across the street to the redevelopment agency, but not this property. And essentially, the city owns it. We're desiring to sell it to help implement the subdivision of Point Martin. And the city's planning commission needs to find the sale of the property consistent with the city's general plan. And as outlined in the staff report, we're recommending that the planning commission do so, so that this can proceed to the city council, who actually approves the, the sale of the property from the city to Point Martin LLC.
Commissioners, any questions, please?
And just through to the chair then. That property is just open property, there's nothing on it.
There's nothing on it, no.
There's no pipes underneath, there's no wires on the top, there's no.
I mean, there's some asphalt from the old Carter Street, I mean, there's nothing, there's that, yeah, and so.
And the city will benefit from the sale.
The city will.
We like that.
Revenue, we like that part.
I just want to make sure.
There's been an appraisal that's been completed and.
Okay.
Okay, we like that part.
We like, we love that part.
We love that, we love the part. Commissioner Satori?
What's the point to Point Martin buying this? Do they have any plans of developing space or as commercial or residential?
Oh no, it's, it, so essentially, the purple area is the city-owned property. As part of the property also is the green area, which is presently identified as right-of-way. And there are, there's a very small, this map doesn't show it, but a very small portion of the rear of some of the approved lots that are inside that green area.